I turn your mics.
Drinking your water, Ronnie.
That's fine. I call the order. This is a special meeting for Roseville. We missed last week's meeting because of the snow and the road conditions. So this is a special call meeting for the Board of Commissioners for the purpose of a regular workshop session. So we got a few items on the agenda today. So we will do a considered approval agenda, but first I think we're going to move to closed session. I requested attorney, so we won't have a closed session. We'll just have items, I guess, four and five in the consent agenda. If there's no objections, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion second, any other discussion?
No, sir.
Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, board, appreciate that. Consideration for the approval of the consent agenda. We got the advisory board schedules in there. The lowest bid contract for Millbridge Nature Park and also the Parks and Recreation Improvement Project. Well, actually, that's just one. So it's the Millbridge Nature Park Improvement Project. So naturally, if any commissioner want to discuss one of these projects and vote on it separate, we can pull it, or I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Okay, got a motion second, any other discussion?
No, sir.
Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And no opposed, appreciate that, board. All right. Review of Wake County Satellite Site. And I think Amy going to do that, so welcome, Amy. Hope you're doing well, you're going to be way over there tonight, huh?
No illnesses and no snow this week.
There you go. So the floor is yours, Amy.
Yep, thank you, thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. You will bear with me a moment.
Your mic on?
I don't know, I don't know how to turn these on and off, the new ones. Does that do it? Is it on now?
I got you on mine.
Okay, all right, well, if not, just interrupt me. No, I just pushed a button. Okay, so tonight. This was a late add to our agenda for the work session. It has some time-sensitive nature to it, and that's why we threw it on here at the last minute. But we've had some recent communication from Wake County regarding the property tax payment satellite site that the town operates. And so wanted to bring this to your attention and talk through some pieces of it. So let's take a step back and talk for a moment about the kinds of payments we do accept at Town Hall. We actually, so it's one cashier window, but we actually have three cash doors up there, right? So we take Town of Roseville payments, obviously. We are also a payment site for City of Raleigh Water and Sewer Bills. And our third is the Wake County Property Tax Payments. So we accept for several years, Wake County Property Tax Payments. There has been recent communication from Wake County to the remaining municipal sites in Wake County. There's five municipalities who are still functioning as satellite sites, that they are asking these communities to purchase some additional insurance and sign a new agreement. And so it's causing all the sites to pause and take a moment to analyze these sites and determine what direction we want to go. So we're trying to become a more data-driven organization, so I've got some charts here for you to share some data about that property tax site. First, this is from Wake County Tax Administration. Over the last 10 years, in-person payments at any tax payment site is down significantly. So this is a chart, just for the five municipalities that are still payment sites. Overall, down 70%. Roseville itself is down 66%. So 10 years ago, we processed almost 3,000 tax payments at our window. And in 2023, it was down to 1,000. There's two reasons why this is happening. One is that tax and tag program, okay? If you remember before, about 2014, 2015, you used to get a separate tax bill for your vehicle.
Yes.
And then you paid your registration separately. And back in 2014, 15, the state unified those things. So they put your property tax bill on your registration renewal, because you're more likely to get the property tax payments if it's attached to that registration renewal. And so what that means is that reduced the number of people coming in to pay, because there were fewer bills being sent out. The other reason for this change, and we talk about a lot here, is it's the advent of technology. So people used to be paying in person, and over the last 10 years, those technological advancements for online payments, online banking has really taken off. And that's dropped some of this number as well. Okay, our next piece of data is looking at all of the tax payment sites that are offered in Wake County. Departure Drive is a little bit of an outlier here. It's a new site, so that's why its numbers are so low. That is a Wake County-operated site. And then the three regional centers are as well. And then they also take payments downtown, though they didn't provide me with the numbers for that. You can see Roseville's numbers here. We are of the municipal sites, we are the second lowest volume in terms of taking payments. So not a heavily-used site. So this is some old data. This was looking at who is coming in to pay tax payments. So we've known for years, those of us who've worked the window, that a lot of those people coming in and paying tax bills at Roseville Town Hall are not Roseville residents. We knew that anecdotally, but in 2018, during our busy season, which is basically Thanksgiving through that first week of January, we had a log sheet and would log people who came in, were they a resident, were they paying for property that was in town versus out of town. It's amazing, out of 481 payments that we logged, 421 were for people who were not Roseville residents. So if this still holds true, which again, anecdotally, since 2018, staff tell me that's still about what they're seeing. So only about 12% of the transactions that we're processing at our window are actually Roseville taxpayers. So let's talk a little bit about the costs and the benefits of this program. On the cost side, one of your biggest costs is staff time. So during that busy season, from Thanksgiving to the first week of January, my staff are estimating, it's probably about eight hours a day that they're spending collecting payments, balancing the drawer, taking payments to the bank, et cetera. So that's an entire staff person dedicated to this operation during that time of year. Now, outside the busy season, it probably averages about to one to two hours a day, because we still have to count the drawer every morning and every afternoon. And we do occasionally get payments outside of that busy season. Another big cost is the vault, I call it vault, but really, that's armored car service. During that busy season, we have a significant amount of cash in our office, and it's a security concern for our employees. So we have been looking at getting an armored car service. We tried a few years ago, but it was right after the pandemic. Everything was in chaos, they weren't taking our calls. But we've been pricing that, because again, staff are concerned about safety and getting those funds to the bank. Armored car services will run us somewhere between $9,500 and $10,000 a year. And then insurance, and this is the new piece that Wake County is asking. So what they have said is that they are asking municipal sites, because they are non-county employees who will have custody of county funds, they are asking those municipal sites to obtain a minimum of $1 million of theft coverage for those handling the cash. I have not priced it, but some of our partners, some of those other sites have done so. The cost quotes they're getting for that is running from anywhere from $1,300 to $3,000 a year for that insurance coverage. So those are the costs. On the benefit side, again, we looked at who we're serving. We're serving a small number of town taxpayers, and it is a convenience site. I mean, that's the purpose of it, just like the Raleigh Water and Sewer site. It's a convenience to people who want to come in. The people who are generally using it are people who do not have a mortgage, right? Because so many of us have a mortgage, and it's handled all through the escrow account. These are people who don't have a mortgage, or who have a mortgage where the tax payments is not part of their escrow. Not a lot of people choose that, but that is an option often. And it's people who do not want to pay, or who do want to pay in person, and not take advantage of other payment options. Because several payment options are offered for making tax payments. They can mail it in, old-fashioned way. They can go to the Wake County site and pay through a direct draft to their checking account. They can probably pay by credit or debit card online. They can go to their own bank's website and pay electronically. Or they can go pay in person, whether it's at one of the county sites or one of these municipal sites. So let's look at where these sites are located. The brown dots on this map are the Wake County-operated sites. So those are typically the regional centers and the Departure Drive Center, and then the one downtown. The dots in red are the municipal payment sites, the non-Roseville municipal payment sites, and then Roseville's up there in yellow. So you can see from this, I Google-mapped it, from Roseville Town Hall to that Northern Regional Center in Wake Forest is six and a half miles. So, and then the Zebulon Site for the Eastern Wake Regional Center is not too terribly far away either for folks in this area. So if the Roseville Site, if that yellow dot were to disappear from that map, it's not going to change the map significantly in terms of places that people have to go pay for those who prefer to pay in person. So, all of this, putting it all together. In-person transactions have declined significantly over 10 years. Roseville is not a high-volume site. The people who we're serving are primarily not Roseville residents. The costs of the service are increasing. There are alternative payment methods available. And a local in-person site is only a few miles away. So putting all that together, adding all that data, staff recommendation is that we tell the county that we would prefer to close the Town of Roseville Property Tax Payment Site on June 30th of this year. Obviously, it is a change in service levels from the town, and so that's why we wanted to have this conversation with all of you. We're not necessarily looking for any kind of vote tonight, but did want to have the conversation, to talk about it, to share the data, and make sure that we have general agreement from the board in terms of going in that direction. I'm here to answer any question.
Yeah, what you presented was great, and the biggest thing is saving the town time and money. And you talking about a staff member doing this for eight hours, and most likely probably rotating, because they have other duties that they have to do as well, correct?
Yeah, so fortunately, we have a great team up front. I know I've bragged about the finance team before.
Yes, ma'am.
And so they support one another, so if somebody needs to step, who's the primary, needs to step away and take a break, they'll often help each other out and let them get some relief. But yes, it's generally during that busy season, it's pretty much an all-day job.
And how long is that busy season?
Runs mainly, so it starts as soon as the tax bills get mailed, which is, you know, sometime July, September, or somewhere around there. But the busy season really is run from Thanksgiving until through that first week of January.
Okay, it totally, it makes sense to me, I just want to ask some questions. So do you know the demographics of the people that use this? I know some are Roseville residents and some are not. Is it mostly elderly people that are using this service?
Don't have any hard data on that, that would have to be anecdotal. Just from my own observations, it's a wide range, really.
Okay.
The biggest issue we run into really is more, because they cannot pay with credit card at the satellite sites. You can only pay with credit card at the downtown site and online. And that is the biggest issue that we've run into, where people come in wanting to pay, and then we have to turn them away, because we can't, we can't take the credit card.
So I do see a benefit to us having it with wall broke and cobblestone being open. It would bring an additional X number of people, I don't even know how many that was, thousands, some people exposure. I do see that. I do, of course, see the benefit of saving the town the money and not offering it anymore. But my final question is, when they come in, do they have to be serviced by a person, or could it be a kiosk in Roseville where they service themselves?
Not an option we've really explored. You know, these days, a lot of people carry a device around that will do the exact same thing as a kiosk.
Right, but some people don't think of it like that.
When you look at payment sites in general, kiosks are being phased out because of the advent of iPhones and things like that. You're not seeing those as often.
Right, okay, thank you.
And if I make sure, just one other thing, we've had some informal conversations with those other municipalities that are in this same boat. Years ago, most municipalities were offering this, and it's been some attrition over time. I think the last one that dropped off was Cary. They stopped doing this about four or five years ago. But since this issue has come up in some informal conversations with the other municipal sites, if Roseville stops deciding to stop offering this service, I don't think you'll be alone.
Don't think you'll be what?
I don't think you'll be alone.
I think it's going in that direction, no matter what, yeah.
I do have a curiosity question. So in regards of the number of people that are coming from outside of Roseville, have we been able to identify which municipalities they're coming from at all?
That's a good question, I would love to ask the staff that question. I will tell you this, so anecdotally, because I like to brag about finance staff, is they have actually had people come in and say, "We have another site closer to us, but we came here because y'all are just so nice."
Oh, that's kudos to the staff.
That's kudos to you guys, very much so. Well, my last question to you is, I hear your recommendation, and I hear what you're saying about other municipalities. Is there any other outlandish reason, or any other reason we haven't addressed as to why, besides the convenience benefit?
Why to continue offering it?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I think it really just does come down to convenience, and because there are still people who prefer to pay in person.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question?
So we get nothing from Wake County to do this for them?
Thank you, yes. So we get a minimal commission fee from them, from this, it's a monthly fee. And believe me, I'm not bad-talking Wake County Tax Office. They do a phenomenal job for every municipality in this county of collecting, billing, levying, collecting those taxes, so I don't... But the commission we get for this, I think what we got this past December, I think it was $58.
For the year?
December, for the high volume, it's based on your volume.
Based on the volume.
And we made a commission of $58. And that's why I don't want that, because what we pay for them to collect the taxes is a deal.
So the only other thing would be the risk of people not paying at all and us losing revenues, which I don't think will happen, because if a lot of them don't have a mortgage, they're probably not destitute, and they can probably afford it, so they're going to pay it anyway, so we're not...
And one of the reasons that they're asking for this notice by February 3rd is because they want to do a big education and notification to their customers.
That was my next question.
And so they want to make sure that they have plenty of time to get all that worked out, so they can really encourage letting people know. And we can help with that as well, from our communications side, of boosting some of their communications, and, you know, there's certain points along the time where we normally see people come in, that we might want to be proactive in getting that word out.
Thank you.
Any other question? I think my comment is, you know, I was paying taxes before there was computers and stuff, so, you know, I was paying taxes when you had to come in and write a check and pay taxes. I've been paying a long time. And I continued to do that by habit until this past year. I think this past year is the first time I paid taxes online. It wasn't a hard thing to do, it was pretty easy to do, if you had a banking account or a debit card. But I do think that people like me, that's been doing it all their life that way, is probably the demographic, if you look at it, it's the demographics that do it. And I know a lot of, and as for your question about, you know, are these people coming from all town? Maybe a few of them are, but a lot of them are coming from Jonesville and coming from, you know, round town. It's in the ETJ, it's in the municipal, because they come in and pay their Wake County taxes here. And I do know, I do know that they depend, I know this past year, we had a problem where it was down for about three days, or two or three days or something, and I had people calling me, because I know one lady, Betty, she goes to the Hardee's, and she came by three mornings trying to pay her taxes, and it was closed down. And so I do know people are depending on that, and people, I am confident, if you cut it off on February 3rd, not February, June 30th, this coming up tax season, there's going to be people knocking on the door wanting to pay taxes. And that's going to be inconvenience that, you know, we're going to hear. I came to Roseville, they wouldn't take my tax, they wouldn't take, they've been doing it for 30 years, and now they won't take my taxes. So I think we need to, my opinion, if we do, we need to transition it a little bit. In other words, I know Wake County is going to try to communicate, but I really think when they come in this year to pay their taxes, we need to give them paperwork, this is the last time you're going to do it. We're not going to do it next time. Next year, you're going to have to go to one of these other... In other words, it's going to be inconvenient for them to do it, but it's going to be a double inconvenience if they come in and try to do it, and they find out at that point in time they can't do it, and it's just going to tread...
And they're angry with the staff.
And angry with the staff, angry with the mayor, and angry with everybody else, because, you know, now we don't take their taxes. So I'm just opening up thinking, I don't think, I don't think, as we hear on TV, people saying these days, I don't think we can do something forever. So I think there is a stopping point, but I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering, is it an easier way to do it, or a better way to do it for the people, you know?
I think that's a good question, but then you have to invest in the insurance, correct?
Correct.
Then you're investing in that $1,300 for the year.
And a possibly vault charge.
And then the, so it's just like, with something, I love the thought, don't get me wrong, but we have to look at the full scale of how the financial impact will be for the year.
Well, I'm sure, I was going to say, I'm sure Wake County and the town will do it, but for those people that come in, we'll just have a sheet saying, "Here are your options." It's real easy, and maybe that will help alleviate some of the anger or disappointment that those people who come in wanting to pay that didn't get the information from the, you know, the town or Wake County, just to, you know, ease the transition.
And you're not technology people, but, you know, if your staff, since they're so kind anyway, would teach some people how to fish, it would probably benefit them in the long run as well, during that transition period. That might be a good time for us to leverage teaching.
Right, maybe we could put the kiosk, you know, or a laptop or something there for that year of transition.
Yes.
Right, yeah, yeah. And that's where, because I think it's a good, you know, nice to have that transition option. My concern about if we were to keep it for that other year is I would hate to miss out on the communications that Wake County plans to do if other units are changing too, because they're going to be making that big push of communication this summer. But, you know, the kiosk could address some of that and make it sort of that transition period.
What kind of communications other than this are they going to do this summer?
I think they're waiting to see what all the municipalities do before they commit to anything just yet, to see how many are staying and how many are...
Because if it's wrapped up in a big communications thing, then people are going to miss that too. They're not going to, they got a lot of things they communicate, and they won't pick up Roseville's not going to do it anymore.
I don't have a sample of the tax bill, but on the back of the tax bill every year is where they show all the different payment sites.
Nobody looks at that.
Nobody looks at that, nobody brings their tax bill when they come to pay their taxes.
So, you know, I'm very confident, if you, it won't be 1,000 people, but it'll probably be 400, 500 people that's going to come by this year to pay here, that you have to explain to them and...
Maybe show them how to do it on their phone, so they know.
Yeah.
Teach them how to fish.
This moves transition.
And we can certainly do that to help alleviate that transition.
Get my support on that.
Anything else, board?
Thank you both.
Thank you, Amy. Thanks a lot, good job, appreciate it. Next item is Roseville Fire Department Unification Agreement. I think Eric, you and Town Attorney Dave want to go over that?
Well, we'll see what the board wants. Sort of preface, come again?
No, sir.
As you all know, we've been working with the fire department, not just myself and the fire chief at kind of like a high level talking through how things look, but our finance team, our HR director, and our town attorney to go through line by line and looking at what are all the details that we need to work out as far as developing the definitive agreement. In addition to that, which is what Dave will talk through tonight, we've also been working through benefits packages, what does it look like for them to transition to the organization as new employees, they've also been included in our pay study. We've done a number of things to continue moving towards unification, which is coming up in the next few months. So tonight, just to, that's kind of like me giving you an update on things, everything has been going well. We've also been making advances on the town campus in the designing, development of the schematic design...
is I would hate to miss out on the communications that Wake County plans to do if other units are changing too, because they're going to be making that big push of communication this summer. So, but I, you know, the kiosk could address some of that and make it sort of that transition period.
What kind of communications other than this are they going to do this summer?
I think they're waiting to see what all the municipalities do before they commit to anything just yet, to see how many are staying and how many are
Because if it's wrapped up in a big communications thing, then people are going to miss that too. They're not going to, they got a lot of things they communicate and they won't pick up Roseville not going to do it anymore.
I don't have a sample of the tax bill, but on the back of the tax bill every year is where they show all the different payment sites.
Nobody looks at that.
Nobody looks at that. Nobody brings their tax bill when they come to pay their taxes.
I was looking at the bill. So, you know, I'm very confident if you, it won't be 1,000 people, but it'll probably be four, 500 people that's going to come by this year to pay here, that you'll have to explain to them and
Maybe show them how to do it on their phones so they know.
Yeah.
Teach them how to fish.
This moves transition.
And we can certainly do that to help alleviate that transition.
Good job. You got my support on that.
All right.
Anything else, Paul?
Thank you both.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
Thanks a lot. Good job. Appreciate it. Next item is Roseville Fire Department Unification Agreement. I think Eric, you and Town Attorney Dave want to go over that?
Do you need a donut?
I do not need a donut. Well, we'll see what the board is.
Okay.
Sort of preface, come again?
No, sir.
As you all know, we've been working with the fire department, not just myself and the fire chief at kind of like a high level talking through how things look, but finance team, our HR director, and our town attorney to go through line by line and looking at what are all the details that we need to work out as far as developing the definitive agreement. In addition to that, which is what you'll, which Dave will talk through tonight, we've also been working through benefits packages, what does it look like for them to transition to the organization as new employees. They've also been included in our pay study. We've done a number of things to continue moving towards unification, which is coming up in the next few months. So, tonight, just to, that's kind of like me giving you an update on things. Everything has been going well. We've also been making advances on the town campus and the designing, development of the schematic design for the fire station and police station. And so, I just wanted to give you, while we're talking about the topic of unification, a brief update on all those things as well, and just let you know those things are going well and everyone continues to be in good spirits around what will be, I think, a really great new chapter for both of us as we kind of come together and continue to serve the residents of Roseville. So, we continue to be really excited about that. Tonight, the town attorney will be walking through the unification agreement. And so, I will hand this over to him and he will facilitate that conversation with you all to kind of let you know what those changes have, the things we've talked about over the last few weeks.
Great. Thanks, Eric. First things first, I would ask our commissioner to recuse himself, as he is opposing counsel in this. And Commissioner Paul, if you could, as Michael Paul Esquire, if you could sort of sit here so you can come to the podium, and we could do it that way, probably best for how this sets up. Board, the manager gave you a good start on this, but for those board members who haven't been here from the beginning on this effort, let me take you back to September 22nd, 2021, which was the first official action between Roseville Rural Fire Department and the town of Roseville to talk about the consolidation that is now before you. It has been a long process and it has had its fits and starts. As far as I'm aware, and the mayor can correct me on this, I don't know that the discussions have ever broken off, but we have certainly gone through multiple iterations of our joint resolution. And the one that is driving the discussions today is the one that I believe everyone participated in was the May 21, 2024 joint resolution. So, it is, it is this past six months that has driven the draft agreement that's before you right now. And I know the board has had a chance to review it. I'm going to guess that all the board members spent two, three hours going through it line by line and found that tremendously entertaining in all of its detail. Great credit goes to Greg Grayson and his team at North Carolina Chiefs Consulting for providing the framework that the fire department and the town has used for this agreement. It is a blend of sort of two styles of agreement. In some areas, it looks a lot like a corporate M&amp;A sort of a deal, and in others, looks a little bit more like a, maybe a residential, not a residential, but a commercial real estate transaction, because much of what is being combined here is, is assets. And not in the same set of financial terms that may drive a big corporate M&amp;A deal. What is important here has been people. It's why we ended up here in the first place. I believe the initial spark was by a former Commissioner Wilson in an open meeting, probably at a work session, but don't, don't hold me to that. Mayor may have a better memory, bringing to our attention that it was time to take action. And he, he held on to that. And great credit to him for bringing it up really throughout the end of his term. The former manager, Kelly Arnold, was the first person to work on this. And he was wise enough to keep the lawyers out of it for many months. And then he passed the torch to Manager Marsh. So, where we are now is the draft joint agreement that was handed out, that was hammered out after sort of a slow process of trying to get to final agreement that, I keep, I'm going to say Commissioner Paul, because I'm just going to say it. Commissioner Paul and I, Michael Paul and I, were trying to get our clients, which was in this case, the staff, and it was the people, getting them to dig in on a fundamentally boring document and make fundamentally important decisions that are certainly not as interesting as fighting fires and driving fire trucks. So, the way that finally came to be was sitting around this table here with all hands and essentially having a lock-in till we had the entire agreement covered on January 15th and all the many blanks and highlights filled in. And generally, an agreement in principle or an agreement on all of those items among those who were in the room. So, that would have been staff from the fire department, staff from the town, and legal counsel. And that's what you have before you now. I can tell you that the agreement that you have is consistent in every way with the resolution that was adopted back in May. If there is a deviation, it is that, there are two, well, two things that are, that perhaps weren't nailed down, but we all knew were out there. One, all of the real, all of the real estate assets of the fire department were up in the air, whether that would be all real estate assets or less than all. And the answer is all real estate assets less 4124 Burlington Mills Road Site, which is a vacant site. That would stay with Roseville Rural Fire Department. The second item is there was an understanding that the historic fire truck would stay with the Roseville Rural Fire Department. The agreement now provides that that will be conveyed to the town and become the town's asset so that it can be placed on permanent display as part of the new fire department museum and all of that asset. So, that will now come to the town. And perhaps one thing that is perhaps still up in the air a little bit, we have talked about Roseville Rural Fire Department ceasing or changing or being a foundation. And it has been agreed by the staff in discussions that as to the town's interest, that doesn't matter to the town so long as there is not a public confusion risk. So, that private nonprofit can make private nonprofit choices with its own board. And they will still have their board post-merger. They will, they're contractually prohibited from offering fire protection services because that would be tremendously confusing. And they will either wind down and perhaps convert to a new corporate entity, or they will convert, or they will change their name. Whatever that new name becomes, the only involvement that the town would have as the agreement sets it out would be the manager's consent. So, the town manager will receive a proposed new name and will sign off on that name. And the condition on that is that that's going to be only reasonably withheld, and it's for the purpose of avoiding the risk of confusion. It is, it is a real risk of confusion if there is a rural, if there is a Roseville Fire Department and there is something else that sounds like Roseville Fire Department to someone who is in need. We, we just can't have that.
No, sir.
So, I don't know whether Mr. Paul has news about a decision on a proposed name, but my guess is, is that if he does, he's going to keep his powder dry along with his chairman, and they're going to reveal that to us in the near future. To this point, are there any questions?
I think, I think I understand you just said, the only hard asset that they will keep is that property on
Correct.
That's the only thing that they
That's the only thing. There are some technicalities. That is, some of their rolling stock, some of their engines, vehicles, aren't owned by them. They're actually owned by Wake County. So, they use them, but they don't own them. In which case, what we'll be taking an assignment of is the assignment of use, but we won't be, we won't be getting the pink slip for the title.
But we had, we had talked about in this process of having a location where they could store stuff?
That was
Has that worked out? Are they, we going to allow them space to store? Is that kind of?
The fire department has determined that they don't need any significant space for storage. In some ways, the historic fire truck might have been
That's where the storage
It kind of was, yeah. It, it was the white elephant kind of an issue.
Gotcha.
Yep. And I, I understand, and I don't know this, but I have heard that the, the plans to build something on that site are, are not imminent in any way, which was being driven again by having a place to put the vehicle.
I thought they had talked about, to your point, Ronnie, the mayor, that they needed the, some, something that public works in regards to storage for equipment, not just the truck. So, obviously, all that's now all void in regards to
Well, it's, equipment will still be stored in the same places where it is currently stored, but those places will now be owned by the town.
And all the equipment be owned by the town.
Correct.
So, then it's not going to make, okay.
Yeah.
It's not going to make a difference.
On the, on the 15th, I did propose, and there is, there is some, there is some language, and we're going to talk about this in a second, to allow the fire department to work through staff to identify incidental office items and things like that, that they are going to practically need to make their transition. At some point, you just need a printer, you know? So, so there are those sort of items, and they will be listed on the final document at closing. But no significant assets. Most importantly, on the, on the people's side, and this is certainly something that, that should have been mentioned earlier, and I apologize for that, is that a separate schedule has been created at the end of the agreement to make clear that the town is offering full-time and part-time permanent positions to all those currently professional firefighters at Roseville Rural Fire Department. They will all be offered employment, and they will be town employees entitled to the same benefits as they would otherwise receive. Their seniority will transfer as well, which is a, which is a difficult HR item for the town to be working through over the next five months. But there are many of these items to be dealt with. But that has all been laid out in, in Schedule 6.4A. So, if I were, if I were a firefighter in Roseville, that would be my favorite page in the entire document.
It's just the firefighters that's coming over?
It will, it will be all, all fire, all fire employees. Yeah.
Admin and all.
Correct. Well, all, all full-time, all full-time and part-time permanent employees of RRFD.
So, in the private sector, when you do stuff like this, this is termed as a lift and shift, you know, where you lift all employees from one organization and put them in another organization with no harm to anybody. Is that fair to say is what's happening here?
That is correct.
Benefits and all, and retirement.
All right. You will notice that some of the schedules in the agreement say that they will be completed at closing. So, the way this is, this will function as a, as a consolidation deal, is that it will be approved by the Roseville Rural Fire Department Board. This document will be approved, and subsequent to that will be approved by the Board of Commissioners. The motions being proposed by the attorneys are that they are approving this document subject to being, so the document will be placed in final form for execution by the manager and by the attorney, and instruct the staff to proceed to closing. And this will be a sign and close on the last day of June, so that July 1, Roseville has a fire department without a gap in service. That's necessary in this because some assets and liabilities are changing every day. Those are the intangibles. So, the dollars and cents, the debt service, those kind of items that, that the fire department has. And, and the town is well aware of all those items. They're not enormous. There, there have been no new surprises discovered. The town has participated, I think, in, in either all of the debt items that the fire department has, or Wake County and the town have both participated in all of them. Decisions will be made at that time also about extinguishing possibly some of those vehicle debts, but the interest rates are so low, that might not be the case. That will be a, will be an Amy, Amy's still here. That'll be an Amy call.
Speaking of Amy and finances, with their bank accounts, they will be working with Amy?
Correct. So, all their bank accounts will come over, save two. The Roseville Firefighter Day Account, which is the social account, will stay with the entity. And whether it's placed in that account or a separate account, I expect it will be a separate account worked out by the staff and the accounting staff. There will be an incidentals transition account that the fire department needs for winding down. There's another financial issue as well, and that is the funds in the Roseville Rural Fire Department accounts are not entirely RRFDs to give. Some of those are to go back to Wake County. So, there's an accounting issue there. And that, that has been, there's a, there's a, it appears that there's been an agreement reached on that. That is, it sounds like it works for the auditor.
Yeah. And I guess, I guess, Eric, as a separate issue, we got to have a new agreement with Wake County by this July 1, I guess, right? Because old agreement, old agreement will not be any good anymore.
Yes, sir. And so, myself and Amy will work with Wake County.
May?
In May or June to finalize it. It's, it's pretty straightforward, since a lot of the things are still there. It just changes, it's just instead of having three people in it, it's two, three, three agencies, three agencies, just us, ourself and Wake County on that agreement.
We will also be, we're expecting to take on one Wake County employee who is currently with Roseville Rural Fire Department. That person will retain their status as an independent contractor, not be an employee of the town, but will be housed as firefighter or as a captain?
Yes.
Captain. And there are going to be some other agreements to assign, as you would have noticed in the agreement, relating to mutual aid and interlocal agreements. So, there is, there is much to do, you know, from, from assignments to agreements, insurance, title, inventories, staffing, training, transition training. There, there's much to get done in the next five months. Fortunately, the parties are not strangers to one another. So, we do have, we do have that going for us.
Is there anything with the salary piece that's, could be a hindrance to us at all?
Amy can speak to this better, but if my recollect, my recollection is that everyone will come off, come over at their current, there's, there's no opportunity for them to double dip. So, there will be no increases to salaries for firefighters now. However, they would enjoy whatever, if there is one, cost of living adjustment that goes in place for the town with the new fiscal year.
Okay.
As they will be employees. Look at all those nodding heads. Look at all those nodding heads.
Where did, um, what kind of commitments, where did we land with the commitment of the new station? Because I know, um, I know they was looking for a commitment maybe to start their new station at some point in time. So I didn't see that, that in here. Is there any commitments that we have to, do we have to, the agreement starts?
I'm, I'm not sure what you mean by commitments. The timing of the new station in general, the site development will break ground later this year. In general, it's late this year, right? Yes. The site development for the entire municipal complex will begin this year. And so that'll, that includes the preparation for both the fire department and the police department. As you know, we'll want to do all the, we, our goal is to do all the site development at once, because it helps a lot with the stormwater control there, and also making sure that the necessary adjustments are made on East Young Street to allow for traffic to flow in and out in that future state. And so we'll be essentially breaking ground this fall with the site development. And we are, have started the schematic design for the fire department and the police department, and that we're working through that. They've done their surveys as far as the sizing. So they've been working with the Architect ADW on that as well. And we've also worked, worked with Wake County, this, their, their funding and support of it. We're going to their budget for this upcoming year, which will make the money, the funds available next year to help pay for their portion of it, because we're partnering with them on the building of the fire station as well. So everything's going well. Everyone appears to be fine. It's been a very, very involved process as far as the sizing of the buildings, where footage, bays, different amenities and things of that nature for the fire station. So as far as things that we've agreed to, everything is moving according to plan.
Yeah. So I guess the question, Dave, none of that language is in here, is it? Or is it not? Did I miss it?
It is not. No.
Okay.
But for a variety of reasons, not least of which is that it would be, it might not be legal to commit to something that we have not yet funded. We, that would be a difficult thing to do.
Okay.
Yep.
What else, Boyd? Anything else you see?
My only, the question was, just to make sure I understand, will we, will there still be a volunteer? Because I remember there was one thing that they wanted to do. They're still gonna-
Yes.
So, so, and so they will not come over in terms of, we won't be supporting, they'll be still under the RRFD's rural department. Like, how's that working?
They will not. They will be, they'll be volunteering with the town.
They'll be volunteering, they'll be volunteer fighter fighters for the Roseville Fire Department.
Okay. But before they were going to keep them, right? I'm just clear.
Yeah, we were always going to be, keep the volunteer firefighters, yes.
Yes.
Well, they, oh, they classify as temporary, Roland. Right? Is that what they classified as temporary employees? Is that, no?
They're non-benefited, um, part-time permanent employees. Non-benefit employees.
Which is a little bit different than a volunteer, I think.
I think that's the legal term for volunteer.
Yeah.
It's, it's lateral. This will say, like, when you say you're merging, you're moving from one entity to the other, it's a lateral. It's a lateral transfer. So that's just our language for what their role was classified as in the rural fire department.
Yeah.
So, so the IRS classifies them as certain, IRS considers them employees. So-
Right.
So it will be following IRS rules for how to treat them.
Right. But they're, they're get paid, they're get paid monthly?
They get paid per call.
I, I mean, that they're get paid for check wise?
I think right now, the nonprofit is paying them on an annual basis.
I know.
But we'll work through how that'll all work out.
That's essentially what-
Does our employees get paid, what, monthly or something, or?
Almost all of our employees are paid bi-weekly.
Bi-weekly?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I know over there, where you volunteer, that's kind of what it is. They pay you once a year for whatever you got called out on, you know? So that's a little bit different, I think. But it sounds good, Dave. What else y'all have, questions y'all have today? Are you, you know, being our attorney, are you satisfied with the agreement that it covers us real well?
I'm comfortable with the agreement. And at your next meeting, I would recommend that you pass the motion, as I talked about earlier. Obviously, that's subject to a couple of things. I have received some minor comments from the fire department's council. All of those were fine, and admittedly, some of them are typos that are in the current document. And we had an open question relating to the length of tail coverage insurance, and that will be set at three years, as that meets Wake County standards. So I, I think we're in good shape.
Thank you.
I'll, for the, our, our unification partners, attorney, anything you want to say or comment? Anything at all? If I have to, I was just wondering, is anything you'd address aboard with?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, it's gone really well. I think we're all in accord with the direction we're heading. We're almost at the finish line, and we don't see or foresee any problems between now and then. So I think the few open questions we have will get resolved. The fire department intends to meet prior to the commission's next monthly meeting. So we should have an answer for the town prior to that meeting, and look forward to that meeting and, and seeing, hopefully that the town approves it, and we'll get this thing done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so I guess, Eric, next steps, we'll, we'll have this on agenda for next month. And then what's, it's a long time between next February and July 1. So what's the interim? Is anything we have to get accomplished in that time period? Or what's the next steps between those two things?
We just continue working on all the things. We are working through benefits. We're continuing to educate them on what the benefits look like as they transition into the town. Well, we have the budget process, which is, changes technically. The fire department is doing two different budgets. So in, they submitted their budget to Wake County for approval, and so that formally has to go in to them. And so Wake County has that, and they're doing theirs, because they haven't, since they have not technically merged yet, they must still have an accepted budget by both the town of Roseville and Wake County. But they're also be involved in our budget process. So unfortunately, they have to do double duty since they have two, two, two partners. And so that'll help us do that. So it'll be a lot of the nuts and bolts, I will call them, around just getting up to speed and merging and becoming a department, because the goal is for not, not for just July, for June 30th and July 1st to be a pen and paper, but they feel, you know, invited as a family and transition as employees and staff members as well. And in addition, we're working on the pay study, and so there'll be some pieces around that, too. We'll end up informing them about and working with them on as we kind of move towards that date to get them to being fully integrated. All the kind of intangibles that aren't captured in it, in the definitive agreement, we'll continue working on.
Any other questions?
Great work, guys.
Finally, it'll be done. I think, uh, I think a fire department is a big service to the community for sure. We saw kind of what's happening on the West Coast the last few weeks, when a fire department is not properly funded, not properly staffed, and not properly managed, and all those type of things. It can be disastrous. So I'm really looking forward to, to, you know, July 1. I think, I think we'll continue our plans to build a new fire station for sure, unless there's something drastically happening in the economy. I think that's, I know you said it wasn't budget, but it is in our plans for the money. The money has been found and designated for those sites, I think. So unless something changes in our, drastically changing our economy of our country, I think we're, we're pretty much committed for that. And looking forward to, to next step. So Boyd will bring it back to us next month, and we'll give you the thumbs up or thumbs down. So appreciate that.
Great.
And I guess, Eric, if you would, you, you, Dave, give Paul an update, maybe if he has any questions after viewing what we're watching tonight?
Will do.
Y'all kind of give him a little update. Any other closing thoughts, Boyd? You know, closing thing. Appreciate your questions.
Thank you. It's beginning to go.
Long overdue.
It's a long time coming.
Yeah. It is. You know, as, as Eric went through, there's been a lot of people working on this thing that is not even here anymore, with Rodney and Kelly starting it, kind of. I know some people on the board that was, you know, starting off, when I say board, our board, and also the fire board, too, that was involved in it. So a lot of work. So appreciate that. But, you know, something like this does take time. And I think it's on a, it's a well, you know, it's a well, I guess, executed unification. And I think everybody's going to be pleased with it when it's over. So thank you for that. All right. That brings us into our agenda. Like I said, we're not going to have the closed session tonight. So, um, so we'll welcome Michael Paul back to the board here. So with that, any, any closing thoughts? Anything from the clerks department you need to bring to our attention? Sounds good. How about Eric or Dave? Anything you guys want to bring out?
You've heard enough from me.
Huh?
You've heard enough from me.
Yeah.
So I wanted to let you all know that myself and Assistant Town Manager Steven Pearson will be next week in Winston-Salem. Steven will be going up early on Tuesday for municipal government, kind of intensive. And I'll be going up on Wednesday for the North Carolina City County Managers Association Winter Seminar, be a time of learning and sharpen our, sharpen our tools to bring things back for staff into the town. So I've been looking forward to that. It's one of the more, we have our national conference each year, but this one is really, really rooted in what are the things that are going on in North Carolina within our region, and have a, have several breakout sessions to help tackle some of the issues that we're all kind of facing within the triangle. And so I'll be there. I'll still be available, working remotely, and be, if you have any questions. I also wanted to just let you all know that the grand opening of Pixels Bar occurred this past Saturday. And so we're continuing to have more and more commercial opportunities and amenities and businesses open up as a, by way of cobblestone development at Main and Young. And so I wanted to just let the community know to go out and support. We've been adding those new business owners who are coming into the cobblestone development into the kind of like group that we meet with consistently about the Main Street Project, so that they can stay engaged. Artisan Beer and Cheese was there, and then also Cuts and Curls, where they've been coming into those meetings as well. So we're continuing to engage the business community in general around that. There are no really major updates to give on the Main Street Project. We provide it, we'll be, you know, those updates are provided in the newsletter, news blast that we encourage everyone to subscribe to. And also, we delivered an update to our business community in person on last Thursday. We have a meeting with them coming up in two weeks. City of Raleigh has been really supportive on all the things. And so we got another approval for an edit to the project that will save us about $1.2 million up on the front, in front of Walbrook. And so it's something that we've determined that we don't have to do right now. We can save for a later date if needed. And so the if needed date is something that we don't foresee happening. And so we just encourage anyone who has any questions about the project, be it on the Walbrook and Cobblestone and at Main and Young, and, and in, end of the streetscape, to just reach out, let us know. We're here to answer any questions. But in general, those are the, the major updates that I have for you.
Okay. Thank you. I, I know, I know this past couple of days, there's been a lot in the news about Washington and some of the stuff that's happening there. Have we experienced any issues with grants? Anything that, that we are concerned with?
And so I can pull it up quickly, but there was a, there was an order or executive order that was signed on yesterday that essentially froze our COPS grant. And that is our, that grant funds our Community Resource Officer, who just transitioned into that position. We do have funding to support that, that officer. But what it does not allow us to do is do the drawdown until a foreseen time in the future. And so the drawdown is we pay for certain things, and then we ask for reimbursement for that. We do that on a quarterly basis. Thankfully, our police department, Captain, they've been submitting those. They submitted, they submitted the most recent request or drawdown before the deadline hit. And so the next time will be in a few months. And hopefully, my prayer is that when, when that time comes, that things will be back activated. But a lot of Department of Justice HUD grants are impacted or frozen right now for reimbursement. And we foresee that there will be a pause on the publishing of applications to be submitted for certain things until they clarify on some of the efficiencies they're trying to increase at the federal level.
Yes.
And so we are, we are impacted, in short. We are impacted. Our, in particular, our COPS grant is impacted.
Yeah. So the COPS grant is the only main, only thing that we directly?
Yes. They, I do not know about our, we literally just found out about this today. And so I don't know about our, our HUD funding that is going towards Main Street Park that we received from Congresswoman Deborah Ross, the community project funding allocation.
I thought we got the check for that, but we didn't.
So that's also a reimbursement. We were approved to go ahead and start doing the work. We're right now going through the environmental inspection phase, where they bring someone out, they talk through the ins and outs of the project, and they see how it's going to be executed. And so we kind of have to do the formal process for that. And then we'll put it out to bid and, and do the work. And then they reimburse at the point of the completion of building it. And so they reimburse when you finish building things, not in advance. And so it's, all of it is pretty much a drawdown. But I don't, I, we did not receive a email that spoke to that particular funding source.
Yeah.
So hopefully, it will not be affected.
You may not, because I, I think from what I've read and understand, it's a pause, or you call it a, what did you call it?
It's a temporary pause, it's a temporary pause on disbursement.
Right.
So if we were in the, if we, if our project was activated to the point that where we were spending money and getting drawdowns, then-
That would be a problem.
We probably would be. But we, we probably won't cross the bridge to needing a drawdown for that until later this year. So hopefully, this will be a thing of the past, that pause.
Because I know some pauses, they already turned back on this afternoon. I think all the Medicare, Medicaid things was turned back on about 3:30 or 4 o'clock today. So there's a group of things that's going to not, you know, be paused for a long time, probably. But I think our, it sounds like our COPS program and, and this parks program is probably not going to be one of them.
We hope, because it's, it's such a broad pause. It targets, it target agency grants, loans, and other financial assistance programs. Some of it, even funding people's college was frozen. And so it's one of those things where we don't, we don't know the breadth of it. But we hope that it'll, it'll be, it'll pass swiftly.
Yeah. When you say broad, I think it's everything except for Social Security and Medicaid.
Yeah, it's very broad. I was just-
I think other than those two, is everything was paused-
Yes, sir.
-to kind of figure out what's, what's good or not good. But thanks, thanks for that update. Appreciate that. Any, any follow-up question? I'll close by saying our mayor show February is kind of featuring Black History Month. Do have guests from Jonesville Community and New Bethel- Do have guests from Jonesville Community and New Bethel on that, so it should be an interesting show. We're doing a little bit different, I think I told you guys, last month, it's not going to be a podcast, like it normally is on the second Thursday, it's more like a production show that's on East Wake TV that will be shared on all the social media sites. So, it's a little bit different. This is the first one, so kind of excited about that, so we kind of already start that. So, thanks. Matt, he's, he's working on that. Appreciate work on that, and also Candace, our communication person, she's the producer, I think. So, we're kind of excited to have that going on. Anything else, Boyd, not? I think we have a adjournment here. So, unless I hear opposition, we are adjourned, so thank you very much.